Okay, great. So it's March 10. This is the third meeting of the Planning Commission hosting regarding the legal trails discussion. And I've got a couple of bullet points of to do's before we jump into the conversation tonight. Tonight's topic is focused on trail users and their ability to provide input on how they use the trails and other impacts of trail use on either their use or the use that they've seen. So that is who we're hearing from tonight. We're going to review the agenda first. So as published, we are going to talk about updates after the Planning Commission meeting. So we did have a meeting last Thursday that many of you were at. There were some outcomes of that meeting that we'll cover. And then I'm going to review some updates to the Planning Commission webpage and review the updated resource guide, particularly some questions that came up last Thursday and in the call on two weeks ago now in February. Then we're going to get input from trails users and then we'll have a period of public comment. So that was the published agenda. That's what we'll stick to. Again, we've got 90 minutes to have our conversation tonight, which I'm looking forward to. And there'll be some pieces of information that I'll add in at the appropriate times regarding comments. So that's the agenda. Were there any questions about the agenda as it was published or as people understand it? Before I move along. Okay, great. Seeing none. So I just wanted to take a quick minute to review the meeting and Zoom protocol. Again, some people weren't here last time or for the previous meetings. So on Zoom, again, we'll keep ourselves on mute unless we're speaking. If you can use the raise hand function during the public comment period or during the time when we're getting input from trails users, that really helps me facilitate a functional conversation. If you're on a computer, the way that you do that is you go to the bottom of your Zoom window that's open. Click on the participants option, which says participants and it's like two little bubble head people. It'll open a sidebar window with everybody's names. And there's an option at the bottom to raise your hand. And when you raise your hand, you'll see a little blue hand come up on your face picture here or your square on the screen. So please raise your hand to help me facilitate and make sure we hear from everybody. Feel free to put comments in the chat because I'm facilitating and letting people in. I may not see all the comments, but I can see when one has come up and we'll try to get those answered or they can be added into the list of things that we will answer later if we don't get answers to them tonight. And then just meeting protocol. I understand that this is an emotionally charged and sensitive conversation for a number of us for a number of different reasons. I just want to remind everybody to treat each other with respect the way that that they would like to be treated and the way you would like to be treated. And just to listen, because there's always surprising things that we can learn from each other. We all have different perspectives and are experts in our own right on different parts and pieces of this conversation. And we all live in this beautiful town as neighbors, as residents, as friends. And, you know, whatever comes at the end of this conversation, we're still going to be neighbors in a community. And it's better if we can get there at a place of cohesion and collaboration than a place of anger and angst. So I really hope that we can take that to heart and just be open to what people have to say today. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this conversation and topic is complex. There's a lot of state law, state regulations, layers of regulation and decision making. I am certainly not an expert and I would hazard a guess that very few people on this call are experts at the entire topic at which we are addressing. And let's not be impatient to nuance. Because there is a lot of detail and it deserves the time to go through it and to be understanding and to really dedicate ourselves and our community to making the best decision and using this opportunity to learn. So that's, that's my starting conversation to get us going on the right foot here. So we'll jump into the listed agenda. The Planning Commission met last Thursday. That was the fourth for a regular meeting. We did take public comment at that meeting. The minutes will be posted in the next couple of days. The recording is live, so you can view that if you missed it. And some of the things that came out of that meeting include that we have a subcommittee that's organizing a trails walk of the different legal trails. This is in development and we expect it to be a smaller group with an expert or two and will likely include the select board and the conservation commission for these walks. And then an opportunity for us to share information out to the general public, knowing that there's considerations for parking for the pandemic and just organizing a large group can be really challenging. We're going to keep the groups small and share really robust information. So more details on that to come. Likely the walks will happen in late April, early May timeframe. We also discussed a survey. We had initially talked about doing the survey early on in this project to gain public perspective and perceptions. We have decided to push that back, given the amount of detail and information that we're all learning about and the ability to walk the trails and provide that that look in with the expert guidance to everybody so that people can answer the survey from an educated point of view. So that will be coming likely after town meeting. So we'll keep you informed about that. And then at town meeting, we will be doing a quick presentation likely of the work to date and may have a paper version of the survey ready then, but it will be an online survey ideally. So those are the big outcomes from the Planning Commission meeting. We do have, excuse me, updates to the webpage and the resource guide, so I'm going to share my screen real quick here. And let's see. Okay, so what you see in front of you is the Planning Commission page on the Town of Tunbridge website. We've got this great document and resource area that Jeff Hansen is graciously updating very regularly for me. So you can see here, we've got different files under the documentation. Then we've got meeting agendas, minutes and videos for this series of four. And at the bottom are the most recent planning commission meetings. So all the information that you could want to stay up to date for this conversation. I will note that the new files here include town plan excerpts. Thanks to Rudy, who went through the 2013, 2017 and the 2021 draft plans to pull out and highlight the areas that are relevant to this discussion. So that's an easy way to see what previous town plans have mentioned. And a nice, a nice way to stay engaged in the evolution of the conversation. Then the resource guide here, when you pull it up, it's a multiple page document now. And when you scroll through, you can see there's a number of different files here in different topic areas. And I did just want to walk through quickly some of the answers to questions that we put to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Being the experts in understanding how towns operate and the kinds of powers that the select board has, decision making and the different kinds of circumstances that we are in. It felt really appropriate to reach out to them. So I sent them a number of questions and they provided some great answers. And the first one is regarding the policy versus ordinance. So this is building on the conversation we had last week. And that is if a policy specifically disallows bikes, as an example, I mean, we could read that as horses or skiers or snow machiners. And people continue to use that trail for that disallowed purpose, what recourse does a town and or the landowner have? And VLCT says that we need an ordinance that would provide a civil ticket or fine penalty for violators. The landowners don't have much power in this situation. But they did note that they could seek a nuisance lawsuit against the users against the ordinance or the town. So that is something we did discuss last time, that it doesn't feel like the Town of Tunbridge has the manpower to police the legal trails. And so an ordinance may not be the right fit for our circumstance, but that's certainly something just to keep in mind. Then landowner liability and considerations, same answer as what we talked about last time, based on the legislative statute that landowners are not liable for injuries unless they took some action to affect the trail which caused an injury. And the towns have some protection under sovereign immunity and official immunity. So there's some different things to look into there. We asked about if there's a precedent for how much consideration landowners specifically get as to their particular requests for trail usage. And VLCT recognized that the town should accept feedback regarding what to do consistently from all town citizens. But at the same time, it's reasonable to say that the select board, in their power to decide legal trails usage, could give more weight to those who are adjacent to the trail. Then we've got a number of answers about trail usage, limiting for groups, working lands access, which I consider farm and forestry and or during certain times of year. And essentially, the policy can be responsive to any of those considerations. So we can limit group size, we can limit traffic during certain times of year, overweight. If it's used for logging, the town can ask that the loggers then have to make specific improvements to keep it up to town standards. And so there's all sorts of ways that we can make the policy more or less prescriptive depending on the particular needs. Then the question about who's responsible for trail upkeep signage and or damage repair. It's the town's responsibility, but then they did note that towns generally aren't required to perform maintenance unless they've previously done so or the policy says they will do so. So that is another piece of particular specifics that we'll want to consider as we move forward about upkeep signage, damage repair. Then the same example policies, example ordinance, the same state process. We did ask a question about if we downgrade a class four road, is it automatically a legal trail? And do new legal trails get treated the same way as all other existing ones? So there's, there's a number of things that can happen here that are governed by the select board. I'm not really going to go into that because it's not exactly pertinent to this conversation. So if you're interested in about what happens if we shift a class four road to a trail, there's information there you can reference. And then this next final section references the town plans and legal trails usage. So this was all put together by Rudy. And again, it calls out the specific sections in each of the town plans. It doesn't provide the exact language, but gives you the page numbers and how things moved around. So then you could open up the town plan link on the previous page and see exactly what is being discussed. So that is all there now. And is a really great resource for anybody who's engaged and actively participating in this conversation to stay up to date and learn along with us. Are there any questions about the resource guide, about the webpage, updates from the Planning Commission meeting? Okay. Great. So we've got, let's see, 70 minutes and about 50 minutes for the input from trails users. I understand that there's a number of people on this call who would like to speak. Some of you I heard from previously and others I did not. So I do want to note, and then I'm going to have a bit of a process before we jump in here, just so I can understand the scope of who is talking and who may be ceding their times to others. I received a number of written comments, which we will post on the website in the coming days. The written comments came from Kevin Rose, Anne Lenahan, Carol Hall, Matt Frost, Ellen Hosford, and Anita Abbott. Anybody can still send me written comments and we can add that to what's already been submitted. So those folks are certainly welcome to also give public comment and speak now, tonight. But those written comments will be shared and they've already gone out to the Planning Commission. So I just want to get a sense of who is going to be speaking tonight. If you want to raise your hand. And I know Michael Saka, you have a presentation that I have ready to go. And I wasn't sure if some folks were going to be ceding their time to you or speaking in addition to you. Okay. Okay. Great. So we've got Matt, Michael, Scott, Liz, and Eliza. And then Susan, I know that you sent me an email saying that you'd like to speak as well. Michael, Scott, Liz, Eliza. Okay. Thanks, everybody. That's really helpful. We've got a note in the chat. Okay, from Matt, thank you. And Todd. Okay, Allison. Great, thanks so much. And if you change your mind and as a trails user, you want to speak later on, that's totally fine. I just kind of wanted to get a sense of where we're at for timing so that we can make sure that we hear from everybody. So so that's about five to seven minutes apiece. And no, Michael, I know with the presentation that that's going to be representing the views of some others. Is it okay if, if we have you go last?
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay. And if, if others speak for shorter, then you'll have a little bit longer, just exactly like how we handled the landowner discussion last week, two weeks ago. Okay, so we will jump in to land user, trail user input. And Matt, if you want to kick us off, please.
I'm have, I've spoken in other meetings, so I'm happy to have other people go first if they want to. Liz and Eliza haven't spoken, so for now, I'm happy to let others talk less.
Somebody's got to break the ice, Matt, so it might as well be you since you're unmuted.
Okay, um, so first of all, I want to start by saying, thanks for your work on this and your opening comments because you've put in a lot of time in this. Rudy has as well, and this has been like a thornier issue than most of us would have liked. And I, even though I want to talk about sort of as a advocate, a local advocate for biking, I would like to start by just saying we're, we're focusing on one use case, biking, which is really no different in nature than walking or horseback riding. It's not loud, it is not environmentally destructive. So really what it comes down to is, you know, adjacent landlord, landowners wanting to strip use of a legal, on a legal trail, on a public right of way. And I just think we need to think about the precedent this sets. You know, if, if you look at other parcels around here, which, but class four roads or legal trails. Euclid and Priscilla's property on Kelsey Mountain Road through which the vast trail goes through. What if, you know, I mean, snowmobile usage is a lot louder, it's a lot heavier than bike usages. If adjacent landowners on public rights of way start saying, we don't want the vast trail to go through there. Are we going to make a decision that that's what we're going to do? So for any of these use cases, if adjacent property owners say, I don't like horses, they, you know, chew up the trail and leave manure. Therefore, let's stop using them. That's really the precedent that we're setting here if we shut off bike usage. And it is, you made a point which I was going to make as well, which is just enforcement. It's, we not only have to restrict a use, but then we have to enforce it. And how are we going to do this? Should we want to, you know, deputize people who live at the end of these roads to run out and accost the users and stop them from, stop them from biking? So the other thing I wanted to say is that I'm talking as a local user of these trails. And there was a comment on last meeting about the bike lobby. If there's a bike lobby, I'm not aware of it. I think it's just a bunch of local users who have biked on these roads and have biked on them for a long time. One of the things that I sent you, Laura, was a map that the Vermont Mountain Bike Association put together back in 2001 with funding from vast to bike, to map potential trails, class four roads and legal trails in the upper valley. And Baptist Hill Road appears on that. Orchard Road appears on it, the crossroad appears on it. So all of these trails have appeared on bike maps since at least 2001. And I think there are a lot of people on this call who've biked on these trails and have biked all over this place because we live in a beautiful area and it's nice to get out. Not everybody has a snow machine, not everybody wants to walk. I think I'm talking as somebody who bikes myself, but also is a father of active kids who are not at a stage right now where they're interested in strolling on trails. They're interested in going out and biking for a couple of hours. And it's very difficult, you know, certainly as a parent of younger children, to find places in hilly Tunbridge where kids can bike. And you can't send a 13-year-old down on 110 or up the Strafford Road. For a lot of these roads, nor for that matter, do you want to bike up the Spring Road or bike up Monarch Hill Road? All of these trails that we're talking about are at the top of a hill. It's pretty self-limiting in terms of the amount of usage because really, how many people want to bike up a steep hill in Tunbridge? It's a pretty limited number of people. So the other, the other point I wanted to make, and I'm not sure there's any confusion, but just to clarify. And I think I'm probably talking for other bikers on this call that there is no desire to use any of Mr. Etcheverria's other trails for biking. This is really only about the legal trails at issue here. I don't think there's any desire to expand to using any other private trails beyond the public rights of way that we're talking about. So again, to make a point that I've made before, there's, there's been a lot of talk about Strava. And as if, you know, this is this magnet that is going to attract all of these users. And yet I would ask people to think about how much cycling use you were seeing on your class three and class four roads. It's really not that much. Any of these trails that we're talking about to get to, you have to bike on a road that runs by one of our houses. And on the busiest of busy weekends, you were seeing, you know, a handful of cyclists at any given time biking on, on my road, Falls Hill Road, which is directly adjacent to the the fairground, which was, is ground zero for biking events. And all of the biking events run up Falls Hill Road because it is a pretty road that either presents a steep hill to bike up as a challenge or a steep hill to bike down as a reward at the end of a bike ride. So I would say that just anecdotally, I would think that we would see the heaviest use of anybody. And there is not that heavy use. So just in terms of what we are talking about of actual use, it is not a super heavy activity that's hitting these roads. If, if you wanted to devote any time at a meeting to actually looking at Strava, you can actually, if you have an account, you can go in. You can look at this global heat rap, heat map that Kevin Rose talked about. And if you actually look into the global heat map, it's the nature of GPS tracks that you can see individual GPS tracks. And you can see not extraordinarily heavy usage, you actually see extraordinarily light usage. It still produces a line on the map, but it really what you're seeing is that there really isn't very heavy usage. And if you look in fact at Mr. Etcheverria's property, what you see is that every track that goes through there goes on Orchard Road and down Moody, Moody Road or whatever the road is, none of it goes on to his trails whatsoever. So I think a final point that I wanted to make is just, as we think about this policy, I think we have to think about this. Really from the perspective that was adopted by, as when the town put together the town plan, which is, what are we, you know, how does this impact the development and evolution of Tunbridge? We are in a period of transition from old agriculture, dairy-based agriculture to a new agriculture model with smaller farms where we are looking to attract young, you know, ideally young families to this place to find other ways to drive economic opportunity. To the extent that there are cyclists visiting, they are going to Worthy Burger and buying food that is grown on local farms. They're going to to Upper Pass or First Branch and buying beer that's brewed in local breweries. They are stopping at Broccoli Bank, which, you know, Dan and Allison own the, where the facility for Broccoli Bank and buying local beer. So we have to think about how we are building our community, how we're attracting young families who have kids and people who may be coming to Tunbridge because they're interested in outdoor activities. We heard Zach Freeman two meetings ago, talking about the activity in Randolph and Braintree. There's lots of outdoor activity in Rochester. We're in competition with those places for, for young families to come. And as a parent of children who are graduating, you know, in college and graduating from college and whom I'd like to see return to this area. I want to make sure that they have a place where they can do the things that they want because otherwise they'll move to the Mad River Valley or they'll move to Randolph or they'll move to Braintree. And so just to sum up, I think we were talking about a very tiny usage by, largely by locals of these, of these trails. It's been done for decades. I've biked them for decades. I think there are other people on these calls who have, they've appeared on bike maps for decades. And if we shut off bike use for these trails, what is to stop the next landowner who doesn't like smelly snowmobiles or horseback riders who give people the evil eye when they bike by or road or drive by from shutting down that usage? What is the difference and what is the precedent we're setting? So that's it. That's it for me.
Thanks, Matt. What, when you were speaking, I remembered that there were two points that I wanted to bring up that were made in the last meeting, I believe at the Planning Commission meeting or this previous meeting that I think we weren't sure about, and so we weren't able to respond at the time. One of the points was that the landowners themselves own the legal trails and thus have the ability to restrict access and or uses on those legal trails. The landowners do not own the legal trails and cannot themselves decide what kinds of use they, they will or will not allow. The remaining acreage of their property, they can certainly decide whether or not to open that up for use and the kinds of use. The legal trails are a right of way that are owned by the town. And so that, that was something that came up that I just wanted to clarify because I think that could sway some people's opinion on how this conversation goes. And I also just want to remind people that if this conversation has focused a lot on bikes, it should focus on all uses of trails. There's, to my understanding, also not a bike lobby. There's a group of bike enthusiasts, just as long, as well as there's a bike of horse enthusiasts and hiking enthusiasts and snow machine enthusiasts. And all of those can be considered a special interest group or a lobby. And so if you're going to use that in a negative way about another group, you can also use it to describe yourself. So just keep that in mind as we're describing each other and how we interact on the trails here and in this conversation. So next up, I had So next up I had Eliza, do you want to go ahead and go? And then Liz York after?
Yeah, I would. Thank you. I'm, I'll self identify as the fun lobby. No, I don't know. Okay. So I, I wrote, so I didn't forget what I wanted to say or come off saying something I didn't mean to say. So I'm over on Kelsey Mountain. I've been here for nine years. I am on the Conservation Commission and in that role, I've visited two of the trails, but I speak now completely as a citizen and not as a representative of that committee or that group. So I am wanting to express my hope that the public use of public roads and right of ways not have any more limitations instituted. I want for our town to continue to provide access and support for low impact use of our natural resources. So I support all non-motorized use of class four roads and legal trails. And I would say I support this for three specific reasons. The first being the most personal, which is that I have a four year old who's in preschool at Orange County Parent Child Center, where he seems to be making some strong friendships with some boys who live over on Whitney Hill and actually a boy over on Gage Hill Road, looking at you Izzy, one day will actually be able to like meet our kids' friends, families, but so I am hoping and being on Kelsey Mountain, it's hard to get to those places without traveling pretty far around. So I'm hoping as they move through school together, they continue to be such good buddies. And it's my hope that when they're 10 or 12, I'm not going to be the one driving them back and forth between our houses. You know, heading all the way down to 110 or 14. And I doubt if I would ever feel comfortable letting them ride their bikes on those roads. But if they could jump on their bikes and travel across the crossroad, I see that as a really sweet way to get around our ridge up here. So right now my kids are pretty small and fairly satisfied by our 20 acres. But after this year, I tell you, it's, it's feeling tighter and tighter. They're getting bitter, bigger. And so I'm, I would love any ridge trails that we could provide for them to be out doing healthy things with their friends, far away from anybody driving 50 miles per hour on a curvy road while texting, which we all know we've seen people do. The second reason is from my professional perspective. I work with teachers and schools around the country, developing more outdoor play and learning for their students. And my experience has been that there is something unique about Vermont in the tradition of sort of simple, open, public access to forests on our hills and in our valleys. And in many places outside of our area, it is only the wealthy who have access to green spaces because they live on them or they own them. And by having, and they have the ability to travel to isolated public lands. But here in Vermont, for most public schools, you can quickly walk to really idyllic places. And neighbors share their land with no restrictions, town forests are open. Everyone is welcome on trails and old, old wood roads. Very little land is posted against hunting. It's just a very nice tradition that I don't want us to take for granted. From my observations, the trend is that this equitable access will not continue by accident. We have to make it happen on purpose. So I, because of that, I urge the planning commission and the select board to adopt policies that encourage use of our public land assets for all. And then the third reason I think Matt said, and maybe it's because I let him read my thing beforehand. I should have gone first, but no, I'm sure we both were thinking the same thing was that the recognized need for Vermont as a whole and our region specifically, to encourage young people to stay and settle here. And from my vantage as a parent of young children, I see how outdoor recreation is particularly attractive to young families, but also the 20 something crowd that we are so desperate to keep in Vermont. A young neighbor of mine on the Randolph side has been quietly making biking trails in the woods, including on our property for years now. And I actually put up a trail cam just because I wanted to see his sick jumps. I think it may have scared him away, thinking that I was worried about it, but I thought it was cool. It struck me as like, that's what I hope for my kids as 20 year olds to be doing on the weekend. There are a lot worse choices. And I want our town to support that and, and show that we value that as a, as an activity for young adults. So of course, like two and a half miles of trails, seems like so little to serve this purpose. But just because we don't have dozens of miles of trails, I don't believe that means we should give up what we already have to work with. So summary, I support all non-motorized access to our class four roads and legal trails. It would be a really sweet project to work on private trails that connect even more of our, our, our hills if we could. And I support restricting use during vulnerable season. That totally makes sense. Like right now, no one should be out driving anywhere. We could give the roads and trails as much as a break as possible, and we should be responsible stewards of the resource. And I support volunteer efforts to make the trails sustainable for use. And that's not, I don't just support philosophically, I have shovels. I'm happy, I'm, that's a project I'd be eager to work on. And I think projects like that to improve the quality of trails would bring more benefit to our community than just getting the earth moved around. So thank you for the time to speak.
Thanks, Eliza. So Liz, you're up next. And then after Liz, we'll go to Scott.
Thanks, Laura. I apologize for not turning on my video. And, but I am coming from the floor because of a back issue. So you guys don't want to see that. Anyways, I would first just echo what Matt and Eliza have said pretty much point for point. I can't think of one thing they've said that I disagree with. I have two comments to make. One, as a resident and a walker, and one as a former planning commission member. So I will start by saying that my mountain biking days are far behind me. But I will say that when I lived in Royalton in the mid 90s, this area already had a very vibrant and well established mountain biking community. And I was riding trails in Royalton and Barnard. But Paul Ray was putting on nationally sanctioned events over in Randolph. And I would just say that mountain biking is nothing new. It's been going on around here for decades and some of us were very grateful for those opportunities. Now I am a walker. And although thanks to my kids, I don't get to do it as much as I'd like. I have walked Tunbridge's legal trails and class, some of the class four roads. Specifically the crossroad and falls hill trails, because those are on my side of town. But also the class four portion of White Hill and Kelsey Mountain. I've done so spring, summer and fall. I have not yet snowshoed them in winter. In my limited time on these trails, I would observe that I have not seen heavy use. I've never seen throngs of people on, on any of these things. I'm also grateful to say that I have never had any sort of conflict or negative experience with either horseback riders or bicyclists. So my experience thus far as a walker is that these other uses don't seem to impinge on walking and hiking. They all seem to coexist. And more generally, again, people have been mountain biking around here for decades. As far as the ancient history of when I was on the planning commission almost 20 years ago, I replaced Larry Menjido in what we used to joke was the Dickerman Hill seat on the planning commission. And that was back when we first undertook that huge rewrite of the town plan after numerous really well attended visioning meetings that were very impressive as a newcomer to town. That, and that was around 2003, I think 2004. That was when the town plan went from a mere 10 pages to 100 pages. So it was a really big undertaking. I would reiterate some points that have been made previously, and I think some of your resource materials make this point too. Town plans are forward looking documents. They are guidance to state and municipal government. They're not regulations, they're not ordinances. They do not regulate individual behavior. They're guides to the Public Utility Commission on utility permitting. They're guides to district commissions and the environmental court on Act 250 permitting. And they provide broad guidance to towns if they decide they want ordinances or regulations restricting what goes on in their borders. What we heard loud and clear way back almost 20 years ago at those meetings and certainly periodically after at other meetings is that people in Tunbridge are very proud of the fact that we don't have very many ordinances. Thus far, we have not felt the need to regulate one another. Often people use Woodstock as the contrast. We hear over and over, we don't want to turn into Woodstock. And that is true in particular for class four roads and legal trails. We've been using them in a lot of different ways over many years without much or any conflict. And for decades, they have been multi-use rights of way without the need for ordinances or regulations restricting each other. So in an ideal world, that would continue. But if that period needs to come to an end and we need to start regulating each other, I would hope that any ordinance, policy or regulation would continue to honor the long tradition of multiple types of uses and sharing those rights of ways responsibly. Thanks for taking my comments.
Thanks, Liz. All right, Scott, you're up next and then Alison.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I'm gonna, I guess, limit what I'm gonna say, because some of what I was planning on saying has already been said. So as to not repeat things, I'll say that I pretty much support most of what I've heard said so far. As far as, you know, access and use and the fact that it is a town owned right of way. Dangerous precedents perhaps. So maybe what I'll touch on just quickly then I think is, is why? Because actually a few people said, well, where do you care? You know, it's just a couple of miles of potential trail here, you know, what do you care? I've, you know, I've been walking and skiing and riding my mountain bike on these trails for almost 25 years now. And, you know, I ride a mountain bike a lot. And once or twice a year, I'll, I'll decide to take my bike and ride through these trails and that's it. And this is somebody who rides, you know, 100 days a year on a mountain. Once or twice a year might make sense. And that's really the deal with people, as kind of Matt touched on. The excessive use potential for these trails, I think by any one type of use which have been mentioned, you know, is negligent. But, but somebody is asking, what, you know, what do you care? And one of the reasons, one of the things, my wife and I and myself and a lot of friends, what we do out aside is we take in, you know, what's out there. Whether it's wildflowers or mushrooms or the lay of the land, you know, the forest, everything, everything involved in that. Whether we're walking or skiing or riding a mountain bike. Another, one of the things that we really enjoy, whether it's old woods roads, finding old logging roads or these town roads is what used to go on in the land, sort of a history of it. So it's a big part of what actually a lot of people who get out in the woods like to do. Find old foundations, you know, figure out what used to go on out here. Look at the old homesteads. Wow, look at these apple trees. You know, and this is the type person you're talking about using these trails. This is not, you know, an excessive use of yahoos. It's just not what's going on. These town trails allow, allow access to just that. Because these are, these are roads, right? So on these roads, things used to happen. This land was worked and it's a, it's a fascinating part of what allowing access to these trails offers. Not to mention how valuable that can be for young, young kids who are interested in that sort of thing. So then people would say, well, who can't, well, why don't you just walk or ski? I say, well, we do. But as somebody who's traveled around in the woods and in the wilderness, all over this country for a long time, you know, what we've figured out is one of the best ways to example, for example, see Tunbridge is on a mountain bike or a road bike. No, no questions asked. You're driving, you're going way too fast. You're walking, you're just going too slow, even though you can see things more clearly and up close. The bicycle is the perfect, perfect aspect. So that, that just gives, so what I guess is trying to answer, you know, well, why? You know, what do you care if you could ride a horse on this or if you could ride your mountain bike? Well, that's one reason. And, and these are town trails to be used by townspeople. And I think it's pretty clear that, you know, the town as a whole is interested in having access to our town land. And I think it's very important to take that into consideration as compared to one person who just wants to control and probably, you know, somehow perceive an increased value in their property. And, and, and have that deciding, you know, that single handed decided factor of how the town's going to use their land. I mean, it's different, but I just can't help but always think if somebody moved in across from a town green and then pretty quickly said, well, you know, there's a lot of noise on that town green, we should talk about limiting that. So I just think it's a, it's an asset for the town in many ways, most of which have been discussed already. And I would hate to see that lost because once it's gone, it is definitely gone forever. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So Alison and then Mariah, and then we'll do Todd and Michael.
Thank you, Laura. I, I don't know that I have much to add after hearing what other folks have had to say, but to say that I agree with, with all of that has been said by Liz and Liza and Scott and Matt. I was really quite alarmed when I learned about this conversation that's been going on. I had not heard anything about this until just a couple of days ago. My husband and I live here in Tunbridge. We actually have a property that runs along a class three and class four road. While I don't use the trails that are at issue here, and I don't mountain bike. I do a lot of hiking, skiing, snow shoeing and, and enjoy lots of other trails in town and in other towns. And consider that to be one of the great benefits of living here and in Vermont in general. And so to hear that, that a landowner or, or just a few landowners was working as hard as this to, to, to make changes so that we couldn't continue to use, or everyone couldn't continue, continue to use the trails the way they always have been, was really quite alarming to me. So I, I can't emphasize enough how much I would encourage the planning commission to continue to allow, you know, all non-motorized use of these, these trails and fourth class roads. But I don't really have anything more to say other than that.
Thank you. Mariah.
Hi, my name's Mariah Lawrence. I live up on Monarch Hill. I'll keep this short because this is not my, public speaking is not my favorite thing to do. Well, I wanted my boys to come and talk tonight because I actually, I homeschool my four kids. And this last week, we focused on learning all about this really large issue. The kids had a really, really good time learning about it, mostly because we did a lot of hiking. And, and they even got their bikes out today, which was pretty fun. But I just, the more we learned about it, the more we kept coming back to the fact that creating a plan that reflects our values was so important. It was so important to my kids, even they saw it, that change is going to happen whether we like it or not. We reflected on the place I grew up. I grew up on an island in Rhode Island and change happened there so dramatically and so quickly without anyone planning things out. And now it's a place where no one can live. I mean, I can't go buy a house there. My parents' house, which has a sump pump running 24 hours a day, 70, I mean, they're 365 days a year, is worth almost a million dollars. I mean, it's, it's incredible. And so I don't know, not that that could happen, but I mean, you have to plan things out that reflect your values so that in the end, it will be a place that you continue to want to be. Something that I thought was important to add was that when I first moved here, Michael Saka's son would drive across the front of Michael Saka's son would drive across the front of my pasture and go to the sugar house that's on the other side. And that was new to me that, I mean, we came from, we most recently lived in Southern Georgia before that. And I can guarantee you, people did not drive in, on your property, you know, without like, then other people would ski through. And it was this new vibe, and I really enjoyed it after I got to understand how it works and this aspect that, that we all share and that the land was more than just mine. And I really love that, and I love that about Tunbridge. And then the last thing I just really want to point out is what Eliza was saying. We're lucky enough to have one neighbor that my kids can, you know, walk to their house. I mean, that's just unheard of in, in Tunbridge, right, that you can just like walk to your friend's house? And how special that would be if our kids could be connected so easily by bikes on the roads? And I think that that, that would make this such a, like a, a place that people would be really drawn to move to and to, to stay. So anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mariah. All right, Todd, you're up.
All right, I don't mind doing public speaking. How's everybody doing? Thanks, Planning Commission. Can you hear me okay? Yes, okay.
Yeah, loud and clear.
All right. Well, I want to echo a lot of what's been said, and I, as typical in a small town of Tunbridge, I know everybody on this call. So I'm going to focus on healthy community connectivity. We have a lot of civic groups that help kind of the fabric of the town stay together. They can range from the New Neighbor Network to, well, Mariah involved with the Tunbridge Library, obviously the Tunbridge World's Fair, Friends of the Tunbridge World's Fair. And the list just goes on and on. I know that members of the Tunbridge Walking Group are part of this call tonight. And I think that is a real strength to the town. And of course, when you get down to, to the earth, the physical trails that we have, whether they're private or whether they're a legal trail, and thank you, Laura, for clarifying the definition from BLCT about legal trails, they are really precious resources. And I've talked to a lot of folks in other towns because I do my skiing and biking and other things in more towns and have designated legal trails. This is not common in every town in Vermont. And some are a little bit looser with agreements, like I've been in touch with Mike Hebb over in Strafford and Sherm Wilson over in Strafford about the way they set up their trails and their kind of agreements with private landowners. And the private landowner at any time could say, "No, enough is enough." So that's a different model. They do not have a legal trail as defined by our four legal trails. So that's pretty unique, and that's something that I don't think we want to lose. As far as usage, and I am a regular user for many reasons. In fact, I was just on the Orchard Moody Road Legal Trail two days ago on skis and went up on the great vast trail network. And of course, on our last call, we had Baxter Doughty and really appreciate another town resource, the Tri-Town Travelers. And that is a shared trail. That's not a legal trail, the Bass Trail there, that does run through John Ettravaria's property. But it was great to see snowshoers, skiers, and snow machine drivers all getting along, moving aside, waving to each other, having conversations, sharing the trail, not in adversarial relationship. So that is another real strong point that we have in Tunbridge, and we should try to enhance that. We know those trails, all the legal trails are kind of going over at a higher altitude and keep, keep us off the pavement. I have been on a lot of those trails mainly because, well, I ride my bike and I ski and I walk. But also, I do manage a community radio station. And one of our fundraisers has been a bike ride. We're coming up on our eighth annual Pedal Power to the People. It is not strictly related to Tunbridge. We have been in Chelsea, Randolph, Bethel. I don't think we've been in Versher, Sharon, Strafford. And that connectivity, to go back to that, community connectivity is not just within the town of Tunbridge, but also to our surrounding towns. Very important. A couple of folks I talked to in Strafford made note of that. I think that is, is a crucial point. As far as dealing with landowners, and our last meeting here with the Planning Commission was based on landowners' feedback. I don't see too many landowners on this call tonight, but I have had communications with John O'Brien. Of course, he is at the other end of the Orchard Moody Road Legal Trail. He clearly does not have a problem with multi-use, and particularly, in this case, as Matt laid out, bikes using that legal trail. Also, I've had, over several years, Deb Mullen, who's at one end of the crossroad. I have approached her well ahead of the event, the Pedal Power to the People, which is not a major commercial event. We kind of limit the number of riders. I think the most riders we've ever had was three or four years ago, and it was 50 riders, and we did not use the Orchard Trail out of deference to Mr. Ettravaria's request, let's say, request not to use the trail. This year, we split up our ride into three different segments. So we didn't even have all our riders there on one day. The pandemic was a big factor. And I can say that we did use the Orchard Moody Road Trail on one of those rides. So seven riders used the trail. These are really special places. I've got photos. I think one of the, I don't think, I don't know if Michael's going to bring it up. A photo from last year shows Euclid Farnham and Matt Frost and Euclid and his dog standing on broken-down barn, an iconic, it's, it's hard to think of a broken-down barn as an iconic monument for Tunbridge, but that one certainly is. I've had so many riders over the years say, "That was amazing. The views from up there, we never get that anywhere else." And when I plan the trail with help from folks like Kevin Rose and from Matt and Janet Zug, I think Janet might be on this call, John Holder, Scott Beavers is certainly aware of the, the various. I always look for unique places to incorporate into the ride so that folks that are not from around here go, "Wow, I've never experienced this before." And I think whether you're on skis or whether you're walking or you're on bike, that we have a lot to offer here. And with legal trails, I don't think we really need to change anything that is in the current revised version of the Tunbridge Town Plan, which has been delayed quite a bit. And obviously, it's not an ordinance. It's not a policy. It's more a recommendation. But I would highly recommend that the Planning Commission and then the Select Board consider that and all the comments that are made tonight. And let everybody know that all the past meetings are available on tape to view if you want to kind of get caught up on this ongoing saga. Okay, that's it for me.
Thanks, Todd. Michael, you're up next.
Thank you. Don't, don't bring up the slides just yet.
Okay. Yep, I've got them ready whenever you want me to share my screen.
Okay, thanks. Michael Saka here, resident of Tunbridge. I was chair of the Planning Commission with Liz at that time when we had those public meetings, those very inclusive public meetings. I was, I was chair, as I said, I'm also presently and have been since 2010, the Tunbridge representative to the Two Rivers Atacriqui Regional Commission. I am president of the Board of the Alliance for Vermont Communities. And I am chairing a Trails Committee that came out of the Vermont Council on Rural Development's community meetings we had with Sharon, Strafford, Royalton, and Tunbridge in 2019. And one of the things that came out of that was, as a priority, was to keep working lands working and also recreational, recreational opportunities for, for residents. They wanted, people wanted more. So those are some of my hats. So I'm going to focus mostly tonight on, on what, you know, state organizations, state departments, and as well as private nonprofits have said about trail use, recreational use, bikes, and all that kind of stuff. So if you wouldn't mind, Laura, sharing that. I have a few slides here. So this is, why don't you just go right to the next one, actually? So I just wanted to make sure everybody, you know, knew where these trails were. So they're highlighted here in light yellow. Just so everybody has, has an idea. And Laura, why don't you point out where the crossroad is there in the upper left? Right, that's connecting, you can't see it, of course. This isn't a topo, but that's actually connecting between two, along a ridge. So that's what Eliza was referring to, that that prevents, you know, you, you wouldn't have to go all the way down Route 110, I mean, route down Monarch Hill, along 110 and up Whitney Hill. And then off to the right, there is Baptist Hill Road and Moody Road to Orchard Road. And then off to the left there, lower left, is, is Falls Hill, which sort of is just a little nub there. So that's just so everybody is, actually sees it, what's, what we're talking about here. Each, those, those three trails are about 3/4 of a mile long each, and Falls Hill is what? Much less, a third of a mile, I think. Okay, next slide, please. If you wouldn't mind zooming out a little, please. Yeah, so, so this, the author, as it says here, is Paul Gillies, well-respected attorney in Vermont. I think he's retired now. But he's done a lot of work for the public, and really, it's the last sentence there. "Think of the right-of-way as a metaphor, the conceptual equivalent of a three-rod swath of fabric laid over private property, eliminating the possibility of trespass and authorizing the reasonable use of the land by the town acting on behalf of the public." That's a fairly main point. Next slide, please. This continues. So, so here, you know, the trails require no maintenance whatsoever is important. Let's see, the town has no, no obligation for any maintenance at all, where that's, that's important as well. All right, this is just sort of legally stuff. Now, this will be posted. I'm going to send this to Laura, or she has it, but it will be part of the, the record, I guess. So you could go back and see it. Next slide, please. This is put out by, as you can see, the Vermont Institute for Government, a nonprofit providing educational opportunities for local officials. So what the town owns is an easement, a right to use the land for highway purposes. That easement is a public right-of-way, usually three rods, which is 49 and a half feet, which includes the power to cut down trees and other growing things, do work on it, as you can see, all without having to ask permission as long as the work is done within the limits of the easement. That's talking about the landowner. So that's what the town can do. Next, please. This is also from the public right-of-way, I'm sorry, the Vermont Institute of Government. So within the public right-of-way, landowners have few rights. While the right-of-way is enforced, your rights are not much different from that of the traveling public, of anybody else who wants to use it. You cannot forbid someone from traveling over the road. You can't place obstructions on the highway. You can't exercise any dominion over the land. That's to landowners. Next slide, please. Okay, this was, as you can see, prepared by Forest Parks and Rec. This is when Shemlin was governor. Okay, outdoor recreation plays an important role in Vermont's economy. The Outdoor Industry Foundation in 2006, it's a little dated, estimated that the outdoor recreation economy supported 35,000 jobs. You know, lots of numbers there, 187 million, you know, it's just to, to show you that, that this, we're not, we're not kidding around with tourism and with recreational interests here in terms of adding to the economy. Next slide, please. That's a little, can you zoom out a little bit? Maybe not. Okay, again, thank you. Going to the third paragraph, there are some types of resources, sidewalks, bike paths, bike lanes, you know, outdoor recreation for transportation, offer, you know, for outdoor and transportation. And there, it's a benefit of active lifestyles. That's what we have in large part for people in Vermont and, you know, for the folks that live here. Let's see. I can go on to the next slide. Again, this is just supporting the level of activity. Again, 2006, but Vermonters participated at a higher rate than national averages in bicycling, hunting, paddling, snow-based, trail-based, and wildlife-watching activities. And then a little further down, this, of course, comes as no surprise, given the outdoor recreation-based culture of Vermont and the recognition of its contribution to our quality of life and economic vitality. This is why people move to Vermont and why people live here. And, and, and even if they move here and don't have an interest, then they often will develop an interest in outdoor activities. Next, please. Okay, these, so a lot of what we're talking about, I think, is, is, is this idea of ethics. And, and there, you know, stuff is out there. This was produced by, what was it, the Green Vermont Trails and Greenways Org. It's a, it's a nonprofit, but they work closely with Vermont Parks and Rec. So, I mean, they're, they're out there. This is what we need to do. If, if there are issues, then, then we just need to educate people. And it's not just need to educate them, but, but really create a conservation ethic, a, a mindset that people who are using these trails are, are, should be respectful of, of landowners, of each other, of other users. And it just goes, it's, it's almost, I think, in my experience in Tunbridge, it goes without saying that that's how you would do it. But anyway, so, so there are these guidelines that are, that are out there, and, you know, maybe they need to be pushed a little harder. That's all. Next, please. Okay, this is from the VTrans whatever, Orange Book for Local Officials. Why is it important to keep Class 4 highways and trails? And then it talks about who's in on this. "With the population growing and the interest in outdoor recreation also increasing, it is important to keep Class 4 highways and trails as public resources. As private land is further developed, there will be less access for snowmobiling, skiing, walking, cycling, horseback riding, fishing, hunting, and other outdoor recreation. Town-controlled corridors will help to ensure that there will continue to be a place to enjoy these activities." Very important. Next, please. Okay, this is just to say, look out, I guess, to whoever, if, if you are a landowner. It's serious business if you try to impede any traffic of any kind. $1,000 fine is kind of steep. Next, please. Okay, this is a study that came to me from Two Rivers Atacriqui. You probably, some of you have heard of the Vellamont Trail. So this is fairly, this is quite recent. You can see it's dated 2020. You know, and it just talks about, again, yet another study, the economic benefits to local communities. Trail users, both residents and visitors, will, will visit restaurants. This has been mentioned already. It's, 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 it's important for local economies. Next, please. Okay, this is another, Matt had mentioned the mountain biking folks, but this is something called Vermont Bike Ways that, that the state has put out. And you can see that the brown, I mean, it goes right along 110 and then up the Strafford Road into Strafford around, you know, it touches the four towns, actually. And so this, this has been in existence for a while. This, this is dated 2015 or so. But anyway, so, so the state is saying here, use these trails or these roads anyway. These are not mountain biking roads. These are paved roads. But anyway, it's right in our backyard. Next, please. Okay, here's the Vermont Trails and Greenways folks. Again, they're, they're fairly strong organization here. Their mission is to ensure that people always have access to adequate land and water-based trails and greenways. They want to plan ahead for the future of rec activities, promote development and maintenance of trails, coordinate public and private trail efforts. That's important. Education, as I've mentioned, is important. And then allocate funds for Vermont's trail funding. And by the way, the, the governor is putting quite a bit of money into, into recreation now. I think it's, Laura, maybe you know, I thought it was, I heard 21 million, but I think there's less than that. But anyway, there's a whole pot of money that's, that's going into recreation because the state But anyway, there's a whole pot of money that's going into recreation because the state realizes how important it is. Next, please.
Michael, you have just a couple more minutes.
Okay. I think I'm, okay, just talking about how it benefits trails, benefit schools and all kinds of things. Next, please. The Ranger was started as by a board member of the Alliance for Vermont Communities, Alex Buskey. And this was started, I think, in 2016, might have been the first year. And it's grown, it was past year was virtual, but as I said, I was the president of the board, but John Cheverria actually was on the board and he helped support this ride and this fundraiser. Could you go to the next slide, please? And it's turned into quite a popular thing. It brings lots of, yeah, if you could zoom. It brings, does bring folks here. It's, I think, the last time they had it in person was three hundred riders or so. You know, it says, "Ride with purpose." Here we are. The idea is that the people are coming in here. They're seeing the beautiful landscape in the conservation of landscapes and also to see and witness how people live here. And it's actually, people have moved here as a result of this ride. Next, please. So it's been a big, it's been a positive event for Vermont Adaptive, Little Bellas and Alliance for Vermont Communities. It gives a hundred percent of the proceeds away. And it brings young people here and to see Vermont in through a lens of, you know, people live and work here and respect the place. Okay, that's all I have on that. So I would just like to say, you know, I mean, really echoing everyone else, we're done with the slides, Laura. Thank you. You know, just imploring the select board to maintain the status quo of the legal trails now, which means unrestricted, non-motorized use. And really, if exceptions are made, again, this point has been made, but if exceptions are made, then it might just be a slippery slope before other uses, you know, start chipping away at the uses. And especially, I think it's very dangerous to say that one trail will, you know, not allow bikes and another trail will. That'll be a tremendous mess. I'm really against having piecemeal sort of policies for different trails. Lastly, there's a four-town coalition, as I've mentioned, that's working on trails, gravel trails and hiking trails. Some of the things we're doing is public education. We have, we're in the midst of putting a website together so that visitors, cyclists and hikers have a resource to see what's available and how to be. Part of that will be a strong message of the ethics of the land, of respecting people. And we're also planning bike clinics for kids and families, for everybody working with the rec departments, so that people can also meet each other and learn about what's available in their area. We think that this is, you know, everything that I presented tonight, people are saying we need more public access, not less public access. So that, and also it's, you know, the tide in the momentum is for increased tourism and increase opportunities for locals to be outside, which is what we all love to do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. And like Michael said, we'll put those slides up on the webpage here in the next couple of days so you can dig in more deeply if you'd like. Is there anybody else who would like to speak as a public trails, legal trails user before we move into the remaining minutes for public comment? Anybody on the phone want to comment as a trails user?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure how to raise my hand, but I would like to, I have the thumbs up right now, but I'd like to.
Yeah, no worries. Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, thank you. So I think that I represent a group that might be underrepresented on this call, which are young people. I'm nineteen years old and I've been using these trails for as long as I've lived in Tunbridge. And I've noticed among my friend group, many of whom do not live in Tunbridge, that the legal trails are one of the big draws, big draws to the town. I think without trails like the crossroads, a lot of people who bike and walk in this town would just go elsewhere. These aren't trails that are common in the town and their unique locations make them just incredibly useful for designing the kinds of gravel mountain bike and cycling rides and walks that are becoming more and more popular these days. When I think about my future in Tunbridge, I'd certainly like to use these trails that I've been using my whole life, that my friends have been using, that I know have been bringing a lot of other people into town, maybe attracting families. And I think that eliminating the option to use them would really be disastrous for the town's future and whatever short-term benefits it might provide to a select group of people would really be outweighed by the really troubling loss of access to the majority of the town's population.
Thanks, Ray. Any other trails users that would like to share their thoughts? You can always jump in during public comment too, but I just want to reserve time, hold that time. Anybody on the phone as a trails user want to comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move into public comment. We've got about twelve minutes left in our call tonight. I want to remind people that public comment is essentially common. It's not meant for discussion between folks. So I'll call on you. You'll have a couple of minutes, a minute or two, and then we'll move on to the next person. And it's certainly reasonable if there isn't any that we could end early, but want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to talk, who would like to talk tonight. All right, John, go ahead. You are muted.
I sent you a couple of visuals by email. Were you able to capture those?
Yes, I don't have them pulled up at the moment.
Well, why don't you, if you could try to pull them up, I'll just speak very briefly. I just want to affirm what I've always affirmed, that my wife and I support public access. We recognize the trail's existence. We support the trail's existence. We support their continued use for the use that is identified in the plan, which is hiking. And what we oppose is expanding upon the uses that are identified in the plan. And of course, as Todd can testify, we have allowed use, not only supported and recognized use on the legal trails, but allowed use on the three hundred and twenty acres of Dodge Farm. I have to take a moment to say that I have lived with constant conflict with bikers since we bought the Dodge Farm. I have never had a problem with horse people. I have never had a problem with snow machine people, but we have been in a regular conflict with biking people. And I don't know whether it's because they've all got Strava connected and they're on a clock and they're trying to get somewhere and beat some time record. When someone walks on the Dodge Farm, whether it's on the private land or on the trails, they always stop. They always say hello. If you're on foot, you're compelled to be polite. That has not been my experience with bicyclists. I think the last encounter I had with a bicyclist this past summer is I said, I yelled out to somebody, said, "Can I talk to you?" And they turned to each other and said, "Don't look back. Don't stop. Keep pedaling." And they just ran right through the farmyard and it just felt like an assault. And I could give you lots of examples of that. Do you have those slides?
Yeah, I have them ready to go.
You could put number one up. The conversation about the value of the trails remains very, very abstract. And I constantly try to bring the conversation around through a discussion about what these actual trails look like. I can only see, I can't see much of that. Other people see more of it. This is the Enduro Ride that was, that the Ranger organized in 2019, thirty-seven miles of trail and in the dark, marked in dark, okay? And there are four trails that we're talking about. One is Falls Hill Trail, which is, as Michael accurately says, is a little nub of a trail that goes up the hill into Cal Hemingway's property. And he doesn't want bikes on his property, so it's essentially a useless piece of trail for biking. He supports pedestrian use on his land and on the trail, but as a biking resource, it's not really valuable. Baptist Hill is a mud-clogged, sunken road, bicycled by fencing and irrigation structures. I have said repeatedly that in my knowledge, no one has ever biked that trail and no one has ever expressed an interest in biking that trail. What this is really about is two of the trails. One of them is the Orchard Trail and the other one is the Cross Road Trail. And I just want to point out that up on the upper right here is you have the trail system that the Ranger uses and that lots of other people use when they bike in that area. And the goal here is to move the trail that goes from County Road and then the intersection of the Tunbridge Road and then goes down to Moody Road and instead put it onto the Dodge Farm and Landgoes Farm. Now, of course, we don't have any objection, people coming down Orchard Road and parking their bicycle and walking up to White Rock. But the goal is to bypass the current route in order to go on Orchard Road. Over on the crossroad, the Ranger ran along, ran across the crossroads as shown here. But it's by no means essential to the integrity of this system to have that cross, that passageway. You could go down to, what is that, Monarch Hill Road and go up and continue on this entire network. So I completely appreciate that two of these four trails have some utility for the bikers. The other two, I think, are completely useless. Two have some utility, but I don't think they have much utility. One has not been used for extensive biking at all. The crossroad has been on this system, but there are ready alternatives. There are scores, scores of Class Four and Class Three roads in this town. Plenty of biking opportunity. If you could put up the last slide and then I will shut up. This is the same slide, but then I've added with crosshatching all the other dirt roads in the town that are not in this thirty-seven-mile Ranger loop, but that are also accessible. And I, you know, my imagination fails me in thinking about how all these might be interconnected, but there are endless opportunities for biking in town without going through the crossroad and going through the Dodge Farm. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, I see that you and Matt both have your hands up. I just want to ask really quick, anybody who has not spoken tonight, are you interested in providing comment? Michael and Matt, you'll definitely have your turn. I see Sean.
It'll be very brief, actually. I just want to, you know, I would like the select, the Planning Commission to state again, the town plan, what is known maybe as the policy, because Mr. Cheverria incorrectly said that it's for hiking only and that, I would just like that cleared up, that that is wrong, actually.
That's correct. As we've discussed in previous meetings, the town plan only makes policy recommendations. It's not a policy document and there are conflicting sections. There's one section that states that the trails should be used for hiking or pedestrian use and there's another section that they should be for mixed use. And that is essentially the reason that we are gathered here for this policy recommendation discussion series.
But the present policy is in fact that it's open to all uses.
No, that's not true. That is not true.
There's no, so again, this is public comment, not discussion between people participating.
Michael's contradicting me and that seems fine and I'm.
No, he's not, he's not talking directly to you. So, and also I'm speaking, so if you wouldn't mind not speaking over me, I would appreciate that. So I will say the town does not have a policy on legal trail usage, which means that the usage of legal trails is open to any use, including ATVs, snow machines, horses, pedestrians, people on pogo sticks, people who want to walk on their hands, people who want to ride a camel, doesn't matter. It's a legal trail. It's open for public use. The purpose of this policy recommendation is to create the bounds in which we are accepting allowable uses on the trails. So that is where we are. There is no policy open for use. Town plan does not make policy. Again, town plan does not make policy. That's only up to the select board. Okay, Sean, if you would like to speak next.
My name is Sean Oakle. I am a Tunbridge resident and a maybe still young person. And I also work for the Upper Valley Trails Alliance as the trail program director and have worked with a lot of people on this call in the past. I hope to go on that first round of walks. My, I work with landowners and people building trails and managing trails in a lot of the towns around the Upper Valley, and I think I have some insight to put into this conversation going forward. But my biggest area of expertise, I think, is building and maintaining trails, which I think is important and can also mitigate a lot of the issues that come up from time to time, particularly going forward if we take care of them in the correct way. So on some of these walks, that'll be a lot of what I look for is how we can make these trails work for everyone as well as possible and mitigate some of the impacts and potentially conflicts as well.
Thank you, Sean. Let's see, we had Matt and then Allison, you had your hand up for a minute. I don't know if you still want to speak. So Matt, next, and then if anybody else would like to speak.
Yeah, thanks. And I'll keep it brief. I think just on the question of rude cyclists, I guess I'd say that in a situation in which, you know, Mr. Etchbury came out and called to a cyclist, "Please stop." And the cyclist said, "I keep on biking." I think looking at it from the cyclist's perspective, or frankly, anybody's perspective at this point, I think it's understandable that if accosted by somebody, some people might say, "We should keep moving, not stop." So I, you know, and again, to Liz's point from earlier on, I think all of us in general have had good experiences with the people, be they snow machinists or horseback riders who use these trails. They're bad apples in any group. And I think Michael showed a code of conduct, which I think we hope everybody will abide by. But I have a hard time believing that the vast majority of cyclists out there are rude, you know, are rude. The second thing I'd say is, speaking about Falls Hill Road, which is, you know, right up at the top of my hill, I can say that is a route that is very regularly used. And it's, if you look, if you look at the Strava information, you can see people bike to the top of it and come back down. It's similar to lots of Class Four roads, like the Ordway Road, you know, Class Four section, Goodwin Hill, all of which dead-end, they're Class Four, people still bike up them and bike back down them. They're still important for all the sorts of uses that we want to encourage in Tunbridge. And as to Baptist Hill, it appeared on that 2001 biking map. I think if nobody's biking on it, either no one's observing them biking on it, in which case they're not a problem, or if people aren't biking on it, in which case I think, why do we have to regulate it?
Thanks, Matt. Maureen, I saw that you unmuted yourself. I wasn't sure if you had something that you wanted to share.
Well, yeah, I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, I've lived on Gifford Hill Road, which is close to Kelsey Mountain Road and the Falls Hill Road for over thirty years. And having horses, whether I'm horseback riding or driving in a carriage, I've run into I've run into, you know, four, four-wheelers, mountain bikes, um, and there are always issues. Um, there are people that just don't know what to do when they are faced with a horse. Um, whether it's, you know, horseback rider or in a carriage and, um, it, it seems that, uh, you know, we're, it's very risky. So there's a safety issue. Um, the town said, told me that four-wheelers weren't allowed on, uh, class four roads or legal trails. And Falls Hill is heavily used by four-wheelers and mountain bike people. But, and, and they just, they come through and there's, there's always issues. But still, again, I go back to the 2.4, four, five miles of legal trails in the town. As a member of the walking group, we met with the, with all the owner, budding landowners. And the, the, from every owner, they had issues with people using the trails. And I, I, I just don't see why there are, as John pointed out, all these other trails of class four or whatever that cyclists can use. And one thing with cyclists is there's speed involved and that's a major safety issue. So until people of all this, whatever your discipline is, until everyone is educated and the town comes up with some kind of policies, uh, uh, I think we're, we're at huge risk. And I, I think for the time being, honor the landowners because it was unanimous.
That's all I have. Thank you. Liz, I see you've got your hand up. We're just a few minutes after eight o'clock, so you'll likely get the last word for tonight.
Oh, uh, I, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I actually just had a question because Baptist Hill is, I think, the only trail I haven't walked. And I thought I heard Mr. Etcheverria say that it has numerous fences and gates on it. And so I wasn't, oh, I know, I, as I recall, did Euclid used to have a pent right of way on the crossroad? I, I just, my understanding is you need permission to erect gates across trails. And so even as a walker, if, if there's a bunch of gates across a legal trail, I'd be curious about whether there was permission from the select board to do that. So that was my question. And maybe you guys could run that down with them, that have they, did they give permission to erect gates across the public right of way? Thanks.
Thanks, Liz. That is something that we, um, will certainly look into. Okay, so we've come to the end of our time for meeting number three. Meeting number four's agenda is still under development and we will be taking some different considerations in developing that agenda. So look for it forthcoming in the next week. And that meeting will be on the 24th. That will conclude our series of four meetings. And then, um, our plan is, as we discussed earlier, to do some, a walk, some educational information, a survey and potentially other resources coming out. So I do want to thank everybody for participating. Again, um, it's great to have such a great number of town folk engaged in this conversation and sharing their perspectives. And it's very welcome and appreciated, um, by the Planning Commission and by the select board, I'm sure. And as always, feel free to email, um, or get in contact with any one of the Planning Commission members if you've got other thoughts to share. And we're happy to discuss. Brenda. Brenda, you're still muted.
I have a meeting tomorrow with the Forsen Parks person. So we can talk about that. But I just wanted to reiterate what you had said earlier, Laura, and that was that this first walk is not going to be a big group. We're gonna, we're gonna try to do some safety protocols and keep this pretty small. And the first one, then we'll relate to the rest of you what we, what we talked about. We'll take pictures.
Great, thank you. All right. And there was a comment, um, question about if people want to submit written comments or input as a trails user. Certainly feel free to email me, um, directly and we can add that to the documentation that's supporting all of this effort. So, um, my email, I believe, is on the Planning Commission page. If it's not, I'll have Jeff posted, but it's definitely in the Tunbridge Listserve and Front Porch Forum announcements for this meeting over the past couple of days. All right. Thanks, everybody. Much appreciated. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Laura. Thanks, Planning Commission.